I hereby open the meeting of the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Landin.
Present.
Vice Chair Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Quavilla.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
And Commissioner McGinley. Seems to be absent.
We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission in its role as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. You may also provide comment related to the Community Engagement Plan for the Wastewater Master Plan at this time. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody? I'm not seeing anybody in council chambers. So any members of the public online who have raised hands to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll call our first agenda item, which is the Community Engagement Plan for the Wastewater Master Plan. Because the Wastewater Master Plan is not a land use decision and not part of the comprehensive plan, we are not taking formal action to adopt the Community Engagement Plan. The purpose of this item is to provide staff with input and feedback on the plan. Molly Markarian, Senior Planner, is here to present on this Community Engagement Plan. We'll turn it over to her at this time.
Good. Good evening, Commissioners. Can everyone see my screen? Okay. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner and the Project Manager for the Springfield Wastewater Master Plan Update Project. We are updating the city's wastewater master plan in collaboration with Consultant Murray Smith. Our community engagement tasks, however, are the responsibility of the city. So with me tonight is April Miller, Development and Public Works Communications Coordinator. Also available for questions. Okay. So tonight I'll provide a brief project overview and then share highlights from the draft Community Engagement Plan, including key messages and our proposed outreach and engagement strategies. Your input on this Community Engagement Plan will guide our team on how to make sure we work effectively with and meaningfully involve the Springfield community throughout the project. Springfield provides wastewater collection and conveyance services using a system of pipelines and pump stations. Along with the city of Eugene, Springfield discharges to the Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility owned by the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission, MWMC. The Wastewater Master Plan assesses existing and future needs for the city's collection system and develops cost-effective solutions for managing excessive wet weather flows. The city's wastewater master plan was last updated in 2008. Since then, all capacity-related capital improvement projects have been completed. Additionally, the Glenwood Refinement Plan re-designated and rezoned approximately 270 acres in Springfield. Our Springfield UGB urban growth boundary was expanded to include approximately 780 acres for employment uses and parks and open space. And additionally, as you all are aware, passed in 2019, House Bill 2001 expands the ability for property owners to build missing middle housing types in residential zones. So all of those reasons lead to why we are updating the plan at this time. In February, the city signed a contract with Murray Smith. And this diagram on the screen is intended to highlight our target process and timeline. We start with compiling and reviewing existing data, then develop a methodology to determine future conditions for land use. We assess the existing system capacity and identify deficiencies in both the current and future, which would be 20 years from now, conditions. And then recommend improvements to increase capacity and eliminate deficiencies. That's both looking at expansion versus rehab and infiltration and inflow repairs. Also, part of this process, we will be establishing a long-term funding plan that can ensure adequate revenue to address the capital needs with considerations for rate impacts. As Christina mentioned, and the chair as well, the wastewater master plan is not a land use plan, so it will go to the City Council for a public hearing and their consideration for adoption by resolution. Projects of a certain size will also be proposed for amendment into the Eugene Springfield Public Facilities and Services Plan. Moving on to the Community Engagement Plan for the Wastewater Master Plan, which was included as Attachment One in your packet. Our project team is committed to sharing information and gathering input regarding needs and issues from key stakeholders and the broader community. As such, our Community Engagement Plan will guide our outreach and engagement activities with the goals outlined on the screen. As a first step in developing the Community Engagement Plan, our project team identified stakeholders as potentially affected interests who would likely be affected by the project, either directly or indirectly, as well as interests who think that they could be affected or otherwise want to or need to be involved. We identified the general public, the Development and Engineering Committee, community decision makers and the project team. And then in this table that is also included in the Community Engagement Plan, it outlines the likely concerns of these potentially affected interests. Using key messages throughout the project, communications helps maintain consistent messaging regarding the project goals and outcomes. These messages can appear on written communications, service talking points, and can be adapted to include feedback themes from the various stages of the project. The key messages on the screen are fleshed out in Attachment One in your packets on the Community Engagement Plan. The activities listed on the table highlight project-specific communication strategies that we propose that would be outside of the legal notices for the public hearing process. Now I'd like to open it up for any questions and hearing your feedback on the draft Community Engagement Plan.
Questions or comments? Chair Quavilla, excuse, Commissioner Quavilla?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'll start off. First of all, I wanted to say, make a statement about how well-run the system is. I know that the we used to have a lot of problems with overflows. As a matter of fact, the park that's down by D Street and Aspen Street that's dished out, that used to be a sewer overflow park. For those of you, and we also had a, who didn't know that, we also have a ditch line south and east of Gateway Street that was also sewer overflow ditch line. So it's great that those are no longer needed anymore, and that has to do with the forethought, et cetera, of our people managing City of Springfield sewers and MWMC. Particularly the work on the infiltration and inflow that, you know, keeping our storm drains separate from our wastewater systems really important and shows a lot of forethought. Regarding the outreach plan, first of all, I wanted to know if there was, one question would be, is will there be any chance to include some problems with the system PSAs, like, you know, how we have had problems in the past with people dumping materials into the system that shouldn't be in there, paint, pesticides? Also, there's a, I know there was a problem with baby wipes. As a matter of fact, I think a few years ago, pesticide dumping actually really damaged the the working system at the sewage treatment plant. So I was thinking it'd be a great idea to include at least some PSAs regarding that kind of stuff. For outreach, I always say, you know, I think that we ought to outreach and make it really broad. And I know that many people may not be interested in this, but I think it would make sense to have outreach to, I'm thinking, home builders, realtors, the faith community, and environmentally NGOs, including the Thousand Friends Sierra Club, et cetera, like that. One problem I can see regarding the outreach plan, it's kind of difficult for us to direct the outreach when we don't know exactly where the expansion is going to be. But if we are outreach-ing, if we're building sewers out into areas that are the urban fringe or are not actually part of the city of Springfield or that are in the UGB, or even if they're outside of the UGB, if that's the idea to get those sewers out there, and I think it's really imperative that we have a vigorous and thorough outreach to those people who are going to be in that area where that direct output is going to, of the new sewage sewer lines or force mains or whatever, we're going to install pump stations, whatever we have in mind, if we're doing that out in areas that aren't developed now, we need to make sure that those communities are included. Thank you.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to say that I think you guys have done a very, very good job on this, Molly and staff, so it looks great. I the one thought that I have, and this may sound silly, so bear with me a little bit. So I live out in the Thurston area, off of Bob Straub, in the area by Quartz Park, and one of the things that we have here is a lot of drainage off the hill that goes and then gets collected in. The way the system works, there's ponds kind of down between where the houses are and and the highway. And so I'm, I know that there's a lot of people that don't quite understand how how it all works. How the wastewater, as well as the drainage and on all of those things, kind of, how those all fit together? And so I'm wondering if in the outreach, there's going to be some education that goes with that, just kind of talking about the difference between, you know, what the different aspects of the system do. Like I said, you know, when I say wastewater to people in my neighborhood, they think of sewage, but they don't necessarily always think of, you know, that drainage has to get, that runoff has to get figured out as well. And that has to be accounted for, and I assume that that's part of the consideration with this plan, it appears to be. So I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity to kind of provide some education to different aspects of the community that may be affected differently? Because I imagine those same issues don't happen the same way in other parts of the community, but that's my only comment, helping people understand how it works, how it all works together. But, but other than that, I think that it's very, very well put together, and I appreciate all the work you guys have done.
Commissioner Gill?
Thanks, Chair Landin, and Commissioner Quavilla and Commissioner Buck sort of touched on what I want to bring up. So again, thanks to staff for this good work. This is important. And I was kind of thinking, sort of related to what Commissioner Buck was talking about, if there's a few graphic, especially graphic documents that we might be able to perhaps even steal from somebody else and not make ourselves to help people know why they should care about this work. And so in some ways, it's the, like, what are all the components related to this, but also what are the impacts they have? What are things that maybe they could have experienced, sort of like Commissioner Buck was saying, like, we deal with runoff in this neighborhood, or we deal with, like, what are things that they should look for? People in this community know how to look for a pothole. They're really good at that. But like, knowing what kinds of things to think about in this process might be helpful for folks. And then, you know, what the impacts of the decisions are on them. I think some people kind of don't know what that, what that means. So I think the outreach plan is good, but maybe if there's a little bit of coaching on what each of these components are, and then what, what they would look for to to ask for in it, and then what those impacts would have on their area, if it's happening in their area. So Commissioner Quavilla's examples of what we used to have in the past and how that's been addressed might be a good little, like, case thing to share too, like a little short one-pager about that. I don't want to create a ton more work for you, so again, I'm hoping the general information might exist elsewhere in the world, and we can just steal that. And then I knew Commissioner Quavilla would bring up the environmental organizations. I think because it's environmental related, it's worth another direct communication with the tribes because that tends to be an area where they care because the water impacts their resources as well. Thanks so much.
Any other questions or comments? Please.
Thank you. I noticed that the Community Engagement Strategies, a lot of these are opportunities for us to provide information for the public to come to us. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to go to the public. And what I mean by that is, can we partner with one of our Team Springfield members, SUB, and put an insert in their bills? So we are actually going into our community members' doors and their homes with this very important information, instead of just hoping that they're going to come and seek out the information. A lot of people, if they're not engaged, they don't know they should be seeking it out. And even if they are connected to us on social media, the algorithm doesn't allow for every single person to receive a lot of that information. And I just want to be cognizant of those that may not know they want to know. And so if we have that opportunity to partner with another organization or company, like I had said, SUB as example, because most of our community members that would be affected by this have services and an account with SUB, if they would allow us to put in a flyer. Just, I receive flyers all the time in my SUB bill, and I don't know if that's an opportunity for us to visit. So like I said, we can be in their homes and then direct them where they can get additional information on all of these great resources, just as some food for thought. And again, I don't know if that's an opportunity that is even in existence for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? Okay. Do any Commissioners have a report on a city council meeting?
Chair, I didn't know if you, did you want us to respond to any of those questions, or would you?
I would certainly welcome response, yes. Go ahead and take some time and please do.
So I'll just kind of go backwards through some of the comments. I don't know if April has off the top of her head the SUB. Well, first, we don't really have a budget for community engagement for this project, but that aside, I've heard that SUB inserts are very expensive, but I don't know if April knows more on that.
Yeah, so we do a couple of inserts each year. One specifically for rates, stormwater and wastewater rates, and then typically another related to stormwater education. I think those are the two that are recurring, and then there's some conversation depending on the specific project. So that's something we could reach out to them and ask about, but we would be responsible for the printing, which with, I think it's somewhere in the 10,000 to 15,000 household range, you know, would be a few thousand dollars.
Molly and April, I'm just thinking that when you do the one on the rates, that might be a good time to just put a little connection to the master plan. Let's see. In terms of the graphics, I know that's something that April is on point for in coordination with MWMC. I didn't know if you wanted to talk to any of that.
Yeah, that's definitely an identified tactic that we can, we can work on and kind of flesh out specifically what that will look like and incorporating those key messages. It's a one-pager to go on, you know, be linked on the webpage that will be created. I could see that being helpful. I think as we get further in the process identifying for social media, if there's specific graphics that will be the most useful for the project, but definitely happy to help with that.
And then with the education piece, my initial thoughts were that that could come in the form of the FAQs, but then differentiating it for different audiences. I didn't know if April had other thoughts to add.
Yeah, so for the pollution prevention piece and educating folks about, you know, maybe issues that have occurred in the past and what we've done to correct them, we do have quite a bit of material available now, both on the city site as well as the MWMC. We have two pollution prevention pages on each site. So I think that incorporating some of those existing messages and linking to those pages from the page will create for this project will be useful, and we can build that into the FAQs as well.
And then regarding the broader outreach, I think that some of our e-update lists already capture some home builders and realtors. I mean, we can look to see exactly who are already on our development code, our housing list, and our Development and Public Works list. I know that those capture a lot of different folks. And then in terms of the direct outreach, when we get to the recommendation stage, I think that's something that we can definitely think about, you know, as we go through the different stages of the project, how to tailor outreach based on that.
Other? Commissioner Quavilla?
A follow-up to the tailored outreach, were you saying that towards specific groups? Or were you saying it also towards the specific areas that I asked about, if we do have the expansion into, say, I don't know, North Gateway beyond the UGB, that the people out there would be outreach to?
I think we have to look at what the recommendations come out saying, and then determine what we have the capacity to do at that point, but I think that's a, that's a good point to know.
Thanks.
Do we ever just send out flyers that are just educational in purpose? I mean, obviously, you know, I came here from not Oregon, and, you know, we all turn into tree huggers, which I think is wonderful, but to brag about some of what we're doing.
April, you can probably talk about what ESD and MWMC do generally.
But in terms of sending out flyers, we haven't done, at least in the time I've been here so far, any direct mailings outside of specific projects for certain areas, as that can be fairly expensive. But we do a lot of digital promotion and then also sponsorships. We have a full communications plan for both DPW and the MWMC, so utilizing those channels and then also, you know, printed materials through our sponsorships and other targeted communications. So we do have a pretty robust communications plan between both print and digital. I don't know, it depends on the specific program. We have rat cards and things that we leave behind, but maybe not necessarily a flyer, just kind of depends on the specific purpose. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I'm guessing you don't really have the funds to do something like put up signs over, you know, like the east-west interstate between Springfield and Eugene, or something where it just gets seen a lot and reminds us that we have some responsibility. Beautiful, you know?
We have talked about some strategies more for outdoor advertising that, as you mentioned, can cut into a bit of budget. So that's been kind of a challenge there, but we have a lot of other channels that we've been using. So just kind of piecing it all together as we're able.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Quavilla?
Yeah, April, I'm not certain who you represent, and I don't think we were introduced to you when you, when we started the thing. So if you could briefly tell us who you represent? Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I work for the City of Springfield's Development and Public Works Department and within the Environmental Services Division, Communications Coordinator, and my role is, my position is funded 100% through MWMC. So that's a large focus of mine is communications for the regional wastewater side, but then also supporting just department-wide and working on projects like this on the local side.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Chair, can I ask a point of order?
Please.
It appears that we'll need a motion to adopt this plan based on the script that was sent out. Is that accurate?
I sent out a revised script, probably just before this meeting, so my apologies on that. The one that I sent out at 5:20, I had a print-to-PDF issue and it didn't save the file in the place I thought it had, so that's my mistake. So if you could, if you reference the updated one that came through just right before six, there is no motion to approve because this isn't a land use plan. There's just feedback.
Okay.
Well, that made that easy. Any other comments or questions? Okay, do any Commissioners have a report on a city council meeting? Hearing none, we would now like to review and debrief our-
Briefly, I have a brief- Briefly, I I have a brief one from the other from last night, sorry, um, Chair.
Please.
I didn't I didn't attend the entire thing, but I did notice that um the city council did the decide to delay their decision-making on the Main Street facilities plan until I believe it was February of next year. Or it might have been, might have been even beyond that. I think Molly could update us on that that timeline.
Say that again, what what was pushed back?
The decision on the Main Street facilities plan. So um the the, you know, the roundabouts and the median.
Yeah.
But Molly Molly would know the exact date on that. Thanks.
To tell you, I've heard a lot of personal feedback on that one, both for and against. Uh, so there's some strong feelings on that one.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, if uh let's say any reports on council meetings, I don't think I heard any of those.
Yeah, let's ask Molly and see if she can provide a little bit more background. Um, even though it's under department business, if she could speak up now, since you're talking about the council meeting.
Uh, Molly, uh, can you take the floor on that?
Sure. Um, the mayor also issued um a press release this morning on that on the topic. Um, essentially, he feels that both the the broader community and uh the city council need more time to digest what's in the plan and to understand it before um making any decisions. Um, and so there will be a series of work sessions um in June where we will be uh reviewing the contents of the plan with the city council. Um, and you know, that will continue in the fall as well after recess. And then what is scheduled tentatively is the city council public hearing uh would be in February.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, we'd like to review and debrief our first hybrid meeting. Uh, do any of the commissioners have input about what went well for our first meeting? What needs improvement?
Be happy to share. This is just vanity here, but man, that camera is really high. Um, it makes our, I don't know if there's anything that can even be done about it, but in looking at the screen, it looks like we're not even paying attention. I've been watching our, what we've been looking like as well, and it looks like we're looking down um instead of looking and and actually paying attention. So I don't know, because it is really high attached to the ceiling. And I, like I said, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, or if anyone from city council even mentioned, or if it's even a thing. Um, but I was just thinking, when testimony is being given by public, I don't want them to feel disrespected that we're not looking at them when we are, when we're looking at the monitor down here.
Which exacerbates the problem.
If that's the biggest complaint we have with hybrid meeting, I think we're doing great.
Uh, Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think on on my end as a um uh virtual attendee, it feels like it went well. I would say also uh just one um point with the camera. I, well, I I guess a positive and a one potential suggestion is that I I did really like that um the camera had the functionality to zoom in on the two um commissioners who are present in the chambers, and so that we could see you a little more closely instead of the zoomed-out view. Um, if there is um to to Commissioner Bergen's point, I think if there is an ability to to aim the camera down a little bit, or I guess zoom out a little, it would, I think it would be helpful. I know you have the name placards in front of you, and while the rest of us who are joining virtually have our name under our, um yeah, that's perfect, actually. So just being able to see that name placard. Um, while those of us attending virtually have our names displayed as well, I think is helpful for both the recording and for the public.
Not sure how that works when, you know, once we have more.
Well, and I'm thinking we could even maybe put the placards up a little bit higher, um so they're on that top level.
And I assume does the camera have an ability for, uh, you know, for her just to punch a button and it pops here and there quickly?
Well, there are presets, and so um those that are preset, she can zoom to that, but what she did tonight isn't, and Shannon, add.
Yeah, that's what I did tonight is not necessarily one of the presets. It does, it kind of is designed to be quick to go to three chairs, the chair or the three chairs on the right. Um, so I just kind, that one was a manual adjustment, and I le- I left it when it was zoomed into the chair and then just to the left. So I I do have some ability to zoom out a little bit more than I is right now, um and to focus on some chairs, but it's not quite as much of a quick, quick button for each chair other than a grouping of chairs.
Okay, but there's a way to do that so that as we
There's a limited number of presets, for sure.
Okay.
Probably not to the quite to the definition that you're asking for, but um when it when it's more filled, there is ability to zoom to a set of groups.
There's a, one of the projects that the city council has discussed in the past is a remodel of the council chambers and other spaces in city hall. And so um it's possible the camera placement could be factored in as part of that project. Um, but I don't think we have a planned scope of that or what that entails yet, but I think for now, the initial installment was done with CARES Act funding, and so there's not budgeted funds for adjusting the installation of those devices uh right now.
Okay, so what do you have? Are there three different presets right now or something like that?
Well, I was speaking more specifically to where the camera is on the ceiling and the angle that it comes down on. Um, so it's, I think the flexibility Shannon has is limited to the how she pans the camera rather than where the camera is pointed from.
Please.
For those that are not here in chamber um and haven't been in here, it's a, I would say about halfway down through the middle section of um attendees seating of where that's at, but I wasn't sure. Well, and then my question would be, on a night where we have public testimony, where they're coming to the podium, do those online get to view them? Or how does that work?
Yes, there's a camera behind you as well that focuses on um the testimony podium. Uh, and that is um a quick, it, that one is a quick flip because I just switch camera views, basically. Um, and they, that has an ability, you know, it does capture the audience behind them, but it does uh focus on the person speaking so that people online and commissioners online and public can see who's speaking. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Quaibala?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say that uh I'm very grateful that we still have the option of attending remotely. And um I think you're doing a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Gill.
Uh, second, that, Commissioner Quaibala, thank you, and um just thanks for learning the new stuff, everybody who's doing that. I know we're all doing a lot of learning. We're still doing a lot of learning, and it takes capacity, so I really appreciate the effort and the ability for this to remain because um it allows a lot of public engagement opportunity, perhaps even more variety of people with the ability to serve on these bodies. So I think it's really cool, but I also recognize the effort it's taking for you to take it on and do it well.
I will never wear this shirt again in the camera. It looks like some sort of a prison outfit. It's terrible. Yeah, do we have any other business from members of the planning commission?
Sandy and I have red sweater day today, so.
Okay. I have to say, I think Sandy looks better than you, but that's because I'm biased. So uh, any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Uh, so I was sharing at the beginning, um before we actually started the meeting, that we do not have any agenda items for your first meeting in May. So that meeting is canceled. You will uh meet the third week of May. Uh, and we do have both a community engagement plan for you to review and a public hearing on a zone change. So that's May 17. You'll be starting at six o'clock for the uh Committee for Citizen Involvement, and then seven o'clock for the regular session, which includes that public hearing. And
Go hybrid?
Yes, uh, everything will be hybrid from now on until we have some other major change in the world.
Okay.
Um, and it's actually state law to have hybrid options, so um if you have a completely remote meeting, you have to provide the public an opportunity to go to a place to connect, like a library or a place in city hall where they can come if they don't have that opportunity, or if you have an in-person meeting, you have to provide an opportunity to connect online to join that meeting. So that was an outcome of the pandemic, thanks to our legislature, and um I will also say I'm going to a national planning conference. Um, and am speaking on a panel about public hearings. And especially in this sort of new world, so I will be using Springfield as an example in our experiences here, and also talking about um how we've used Springfield, Oregon speaks as part of that conference. So that is at the end of this month coming up.
Is that going to be broadcast or?
So they're doing um an in-person conference and a virtual conference, and the session I am doing is not going to be in both. So you have to be there in person to attend, which is kind of ironic that they chose that for that session. But anyway. Um. Yeah, so any kind of tidbits or nuggets that you want me to share um based on your experience as the planning commission, holding public hearings and such, um feel free to follow up with me afterwards um or by email or whatever. Uh. And we do have um Sarah Weaver is starting next week, so you will meet her at your next meeting in May. Um, we'll probably, I haven't talked this over with Shannon, but they'll probably be teaming it for a little bit. So um Sarah will get an opportunity to learn how to uh support the planning commission and operate these meetings, and start reaching out to you to schedule those meetings. Um, so that will be a name that you will probably see before you actually meet her um by emails. So um Sarah Weaver, again, will be supporting the planning commission um in the future. Doing a lot of what Brenda had done. Anyone else have something to share?
I think that concludes the department report.
Okay. Christina?
One more second. The pub joint public hearing on the development code update is Monday night, April 25th, this next Monday. So anyone who's interested in watching the um joint elected officials public hearing on the development code amendments that um you recommended approval on earlier this year, um that will be Monday night at six for the work session.
Seven, seven, okay. Well, it's just, there's no work session.
No work session, okay.
Or that, there is a work session, but that's just council. The joint hearing starts at seven.
Okay, broadcast from here?
Yes, it's part of the, it'll be part of the council agenda. You can find the Zoom link, or you can attend in person.
All right, I think that one's we've we've had a lot of involvement in. Uh, Commissioner Quaibala?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Chair. One last thing, um, wanted to say that uh I'm in my last year on the planning commission. Uh, we'll be terming out in February. And um, wanted to say that uh put my pitch in for someone who may want to take over uh Community Development Advisory Committee attendance. Um, it, to think about that, and uh it's a real good program that uh shares federal money for um homeless and uh low-income folks, and also does economic, some economic development work as well, so. Um, think that over and um uh think about being my substitute once I'm off. Thanks.
Nice, thank you. At this time, I adjourned the planning commission meeting. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.